All right. Does everyone have their mic turned on? Board members? Put your... Push it up the gait. All right. They went? Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Yes, this is one of the largest crowds we've had in a while. So I'd like to call and order the King George County School Board regular meeting. At this time, we will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led today by the Kindness Club from King George Elementary School, followed by a moment of silence. All right, please be seated. Although those of you with us from the Kindness Club, would you like to share anything with us or tell us about the words you have on your posters?
I see.
Guys, we have something really fun to share. These are words that our group came up with to describe kindness at our very first meeting. So these are their words. Kindness is... Thank you. Those are some really good words. Wait, any of you like to share anything else? Tell us about what you do in the Kindness Club.
You want to move up to the mic a little closer?
Yeah, can you come a little closer to the mic and tell us?
Um, we do, um, like projects to help our community and help the world.
Awesome. I know, a lot of people here. Well, it sounds like a great club and we're happy to have you all here this evening. So thank you for coming and sharing this evening with us. Thank you, guys. All right. At this time, we will have, we have two recognitions on our, on our agenda this evening. Need to pull one of them up here. All right, and so first this evening, in honor of Bullying Prevention Month, month, excuse me, I'm going to share a certificate of recognition. So by virtue of the authority vested in the, by the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant and prevalent problem throughout the Commonwealth and the nation. And whereas it is estimated that more than 20% of the United States youth are involved in bullying each year, either as a victim or as an aggressor. And whereas bullying can assume many forms, including verbal, physical, emotional, and cyber, and can happen both on and off school grounds. And whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of and address bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. And now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize October 2021 as Bullying Prevention Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. All right, and next up, we have some recognition of the Virginia School Counselors Association.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Tonight, we have a very special recognition of Mrs. Sarah Ritchie. Ms. Ritchie, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Ms. Ritchie is a school counselor at King George Elementary School, as you saw this evening. And not only does she fill her days supporting our students with a wide array of needs, she is also active in her school community. She helps with fall beautification projects, supports the PTA, and sponsors an after-school club. We also recognize Mrs. Ritchie tonight for her work with the Virginia School Counselors Association. Mrs. Ritchie serves as the Communications and Public Relations Committee Chair for the organization. She also recently published an article titled, "Let's Build Self Skills and Stem Empathy." And that article is included in your board packet this evening. So thank you, Mrs. Ritchie, for your contributions to King George County Schools and our counseling program. And Mrs. Ritchie is joined tonight with her family and also her administrator, Mr. Sire, and her students and their families. So thank you, guys, all for being here.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ritchie, for all that you do. All right, next, we have public and employee comment. Thank you, Ms. Bushrod. All right, so first, first for our public comment this evening, I will ask that you please state your name, address, and limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. All right, so first this evening, we have John Day.
Good evening, Chairwoman Gonzalez, Chair School Board Members, and Dr. Benson. My name is John Day and I am the Transportation Coordinator for King George County Schools. I live at 18302 Green Boulevard. Tonight, you'll be deliberating about bus driver pay. I just want to let you know that even though we are short bus drivers, we are not in the same situation as Stafford County, which providing new drivers a $3,000 signup bonus. Because of the signup bonus, Stafford County had over 30 applicants who were trained and additional 22 more who are currently in training. If we had those numbers, we would be absolutely overwhelmed. We currently have four applicants who are in the various stages of training right now to become bus drivers. Creating a new pay scale for our current drivers will ensure, one, that we can retain our drivers, and, two, can provide a living wage, especially for those who are single parents. But please, in your deliberations, do not forget our dedicated monitors, who at this time receive as a starting pay $10.54 an hour. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Next, Melissa Brown.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Brown. I live at 11177 Round Hill Estate Drive. And I'm here tonight to talk to you also about the pay that we get as drivers and with the years that we've put in. I myself now, I'm a trainer, also a driver for King George County. We have a hard time getting these people in here. And once we do get them in here, we get them trained. Pay's not sufficient, they go on. And once they have the Class B CDL, they can go drive a dump truck, a Fred Bus, or any other thing that offers them a higher amount of money. Right now, we don't have competitive pay compared to Stafford, Spotsylvania. I do understand that they're bigger counties, but we're going to start losing air drivers to them with the $3,000 sign-on bonus that most of them are offering. And I looked up in their paperwork and stuff, and Stafford County, at 10 years, they're making $27.50 an hour. We're not making that here. We're barely making $19 to $20 an hour at this point. And then even at Spotsylvania... I'm sorry, I have some stuff to give you later, but I only have five copies, but I will make sure that I get a copy to Mr. Benson at the school board office tomorrow. At a 20-year veteran for Spotsylvania County Schools, and it's a seven-and-a-half-hour contract a day, for the 20-year veteran, you get $28.60. Where we're not getting that here. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it does make a big difference when you are single parents, a single-income family. And, you know, we, we put dedication into this. I started out on this, doing this 22 years ago. My daughter was only three at the time. I only planned to stay until she was old enough to get out of high school. Needless to say, she's 25 now, and I love what I do. I'm with the Special Needs Program. But we seriously need to be brought up to date to where we're at, or we're going to start losing people. That $3,000 sign-on bonus looks really good to a lot of people, and the higher wages, that appeals also as well. Also, I would like to bring to your attention that our monitors, like Mr. Day said, are way below any other county. We're starting out at just barely over $10 an hour, and they don't see any room for improvement. Where Stafford's starting out, their monitors at almost $15 an hour. After 10 years being a monitor there, you're getting $20 an hour. And then if you're a 20-year veteran, you're going to bump up to 25, and that's a lot different than we have here. I think at, I don't want to quote it wrong, but just to make sure that I'm right. Okay, for our monitor scale here in King George County, a 10-year monitor only gets $11.64, and a 20-year monitor only gets $14.18. Okay, also, I know that there's another lady that's want to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm sorry, but your three minutes are...
Okay, all right, thank you so much. I'm so sorry.
It's fine, thank you. All right, next, Sharice Hands.
Three minutes goes fast. I'm going to be quick. My name is Sharice Hands. I live at 11350 Pine Hill Road. I've been a bus driver for five years. We work early mornings, we work late evenings. We make out-of-county trips. We're understaffed for extra runs, or extra runs need to be made by other people. We have all of our office staff and our mechanics driving buses because we are so short-staffed, which they should be in the office taking care of us, taking care of the kids, taking care of everybody else, not driving a bus. But we can't get any drivers. We don't make the money to be able to make it appealing for them. We need our monitors. Our monitors are so important to us. Bus drivers need to drive. Monitors need to maintain the bus so the driver can do their job. The monitor can make sure that the children are safe, especially on our special-needs buses or some of the more difficult routes that we have. We have to clean in between every single run. We have to disinfect and fog our buses every week. We have paperwork. We have to keep track of seats. Because if a COVID outbreak happens, we have to be able to know who sits where every single day, if they ride, if they don't ride. We have to be able to have all of that information. And these children are our own. When we pick them up, they become our responsibility. They become our children. And they do not become, they do not stop being our children. They get off that bus, they go into school, then we pick them up. We're the first person they see. When they get on the bus, they're the person, we're the person that they tell something amazing that happened during the day before they even get home to their parents. And we love that. And you can ask any bus driver that is here today, they are our children the entire time that they are on that bus, and we look after them like that. I know other counties are making more money. My son, who works at Wendy's as a fry cook, is making $3 an hour more than our monitors, and he's dipping fries. And our drivers who start out, he's making $3 an hour less than them. So a fry cook is making $13 an hour, and you want bus drivers to come and drive for our county and only make 16? And we don't get paid throughout the summertime, like a lot of people think. Well, you get your summers off, that's all well and good, but we don't. We get paid just like teachers, 180 days that are contracted. It gets divided by 12 months, and that's what we get paid. We don't get paid over summertime, just like our teachers. Cost of living, most of our bus drivers have to work two, maybe three jobs. And most of us get into it because we have young children, because we want to be there for our kids. We want to watch them grow up. We don't want to leave them with a stranger. We want to be able to take care of them, but also provide to our households. So I please encourage you to adjust the payment wage, make it more effective and make it more...
Thank you, Ms. Hands. Mr. Benson, do we have any comment online? One, all right.
Hello? Can you all hear me?
Barely hear them.
Did everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Sean Tipton. I live at 12150 Ridge Road here in King George. And just a few things, I'm going to be brief. Cheers and cheer, okay. Cheers, Ms. Strauss and the DECA program. Great job to you guys. Everything you guys are doing is wonderful. I have a daughter in the DECA program and works with Ms. Strauss all the time. And she's a great leader and a great teacher, and I'm thankful that she's in my daughter's life there at school. Okay, I've been told, okay, next thing. Bathrooms at the high school. I've been told this is getting better. However, supplies, toilet paper, when young ladies are asking each other to please hand a roll between the stalls, that's unacceptable. Fentanyl hygiene disposal not being done, that's just plain nasty. And the number of units available. This is where my real concern goes, because they're having problems with the, with kids or that are vandalizing the bathrooms, and the entire school's getting punished for it. I've got teachers telling students, my students, that unless you all, unless you all figure this out, this is what's going to happen. So they, you know, we all pay taxes, all right? We, there's a janitor, there's an SRO. Find out who did it. Make that kid pay, make his parents pay, him, him or her. It doesn't matter. I mean, stop the mass punishments, that's all I'm asking. And communication. This goes for, when I call a school and I ask to speak with a principal about something that they said or clarification of something that came out of their mouth, and I get contacted by an assistant principal, they tell me, well, I believe what principal said was this, and this is what, I don't want to hear that. I'm asking, I want to hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak. I want to hear what they said. I want, I don't want to hear an interpretation. But I'm told that a principal has not got the time to talk to me because they're taking care of another issue. Fine, call me back later. It's fine, I don't care. But at least call me back. Don't just brush me off and tell me I don't count. So, and bullying prevention, good luck on that. It's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So at this time, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Ben, sure.
Okay, thank you. The first of this evening, we have our action items on the agenda for consideration this evening. Would we like to make a motion to accept the action items as presented?
Like to make a motion to accept the actions items as presented?
Second.
Sorry, oh, sorry. Dr. Benson? We can? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. My apologies.
Do each one individually?
What was that, Ms. Panzier?
Did you want to do each one individually?
Yes, we'll do that because we need to discuss the employee compensation one. I'm sorry.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Technology Advisory Committee?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Two votes aye, motion carries. Next, we have employee compensation. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last meeting, or actually the last couple of meetings, you have entertained a discussion and requested that staff do some homework for you regarding a couple of things related to employee compensation. The first was the substitute rates. And in your packet, we have provided for you a document or a table that summarizes our current rate for substitute compensation. We also applied, as you requested last time, we took the $100 as the base for the substitute teacher. It turned out to be a multiplier of .33. So we multiplied the other rates by 1.33 to apply the same increase relatively to the other substitute positions. And you'll see in the third column there, that 33% increase to all current rates. The next column was we maintain the 33% increase for the substitutes, or we place the highest compensation in our locality, you know, with those with whom we compete most frequently as a recommendation in the right-hand column. So you have that information requested, and you also have the last column, which then gives you kind of a benchmark against compensation from neighboring divisions to consider. In doing that chart for you, we did discover that in addition to the bus driver salary scale that you wanted to revisit, the parapro position skill would probably need to be revisited if you adopted a change to the sub-rate for parapro substitutes. Otherwise, a substitute could conceivably make more daily than a permanent employee in that very same position. So it was not, we have included the information you requested for bus driver salary scale, those estimated costs. We've also included for parapros just for that reason. It was not meant to pick an employee group, but we knew that conflict would exist. It was not meant to exclude, as was mentioned tonight, the, the monitors or any other employee group for that reason. It was simply in response to what we discovered when we did the homework for you as far as the substitute costs. So transitioning then, you see then the table or the document that includes the table as far as the, the bus driver salary scale, revisiting that, revisiting the parapro salary scale, and also looking at a in-year step increase for all employees to include bus drivers and parapros and monitors and such. So with that said, let me first say this would be a unique, but certainly welcome initiative for a school board. Never before, in my tenure at least, have we looked to try to utilize fund balance or funds that could be discretionary to do this type of thing. I did go back and revisit. I do estimate that, and again, this is a, a current fund balance, and it's attributable. I want to make sure the public understands that this fund balance that we project is attributable to positions that may be currently vacant or filled with the long-term substitute. It is also attributable to differences between the amount that we budgeted into this year and ultimately the employee we hired to fill that, that position if the compensation was less than was budgeted. We call that breakage or lapse money in the case of vacancies. So right now, I do believe, as requested by the board, that we estimate there could be as much as 850,000 that could be available to this board to utilize with the topics that you've presented in previous meetings. So the, so the following table below that then lays out for you what you requested. And this took a good bit of work. I want to thank our HR department, in particular, Ms. Belinda Tashazo and Ms. Sherri Williams, Ms. Yozierski, for their work, because there was many hours, you know, going back, recalculating, trying to determine kind of these unique costs. And so the very best of our ability, we have estimated those costs for the different initiatives that you've discussed. And you see there to the right, well, first you see the description, and then you see to the right the estimated amount for each of the options that we've tried to, to, to frame for your consideration. I'll go back to, one thing to consider is that, again, I fully support anything we can do to help with compensation and employees. We all need to understand that if such, if we take such action, we do impact or we create a recurring cost that we must address in subsequent budgets. And so we are starting next year with an increased cost that we would hope would be supported either through increased funding at the state level or more likely a combination of increased funding at the state level and certainly support at the local level, since in Virginia, school budget funding is a partnership between the state and the locality. So again, just some things for the board to consider that I don't think I've mentioned before. With that outline for you, I did look at what I think, you know, we need to consider that these positions from where, from which the, the, some of the funds available to you are derived, we will continue to try to fill those, of course. If we have a long-term substitute for a teacher, we will continue to try to fill that with a certified or licensed teacher. So if we're able to do so between now and the end of the year, there could be a little bit of a cost difference, which might affect, you know, that 850,000. That makes sense? So again, it's a unique opportunity. It's a unique initiative, and I applaud the board for looking at it and certainly support it. I just want to be, you know, as your superintendent, I want to be prudent in not placing us in a position where we're at a deficit come year's end. And so framing both the funds available to you and then framing the cost, the estimated cost for each of these, I think is, is important for your discussion this evening. We, as far as the increased cost that may attribute, be attributable to subrates, if you increase those, it's just very difficult to estimate that. Yes, there could, there certainly would be a little bit of an increase there. What I've tried to do is hold in reserve, you know, some funding to make sure we can cover those increased substitute costs should you adopt that rate as well. So it's, it's a, financially, it's a picture where we just want to make sure we have the funding to follow through and what the board may decide to do. And in keeping that in mind, then make a recommendation to the board. I did in the packet for the public and for the board, I did recommend that the board look closely at option I. Option I would raise the bus driver scale from where it currently is to a starting point of $18 per hour, and the pair is to $16 an hour, which would also include a step increase for all employees to include bus drivers and pairs and all employees then, beginning in March. And that price tag is $680,782. I've written myself a note because I also want to remind the board that in our previous discussion, we committed to looking at re-engaging in a, a salary study with our competitors locally to make sure that in our FY '23 budget, we propose hourly rates and compensation rates that are, again, competitive and that we've not fallen behind. So everything tonight, I want to make clear, is looking to utilize FY '22, this current year money, with an eye towards developing a budget for FY '23 that may very well increase, you know, base salary scale numbers. But it will be done at a time where we can plan for that cost and then seek the support of state and local funding to fulfill those costs in FY '23. So I'm happy to answer questions or to engage with you in your discussion, do additional research as you need, as you consider this. But again, I want to thank staff for doing the homework for you and preparing it for your consideration, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. So at this time, do any of my colleagues have questions for Dr. Benson? Ms. Panzier, would you like to begin?
Pass at the moment.
Okay, Ms. Hough?
Um, no, I do appreciate your eye towards sustainability. We want to do every, everything we can at the moment, because we are in a crisis and we realize that. But, but we also want to make it sustainable so that you don't go backwards at some point, because our budget won't support it. So, I mean, we've got, have an eye for the future. If, you know, frankly, we need to say to our county and to our local government that, that our employees are worth every penny. And if that means a tax increase, then that's what it's going to mean.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Dr. Cutwright.
Yes, I also agree that sustainability is very important in the upcoming years, and I know how hard bus drivers work. And as I said in the last meeting, we need to make sure that you are compensated as well as other businesses in the area. And you are responsible for all of our children, as someone mentioned a few minutes ago, and it's a very important job, and we understand that. And we know that it's a challenging job as well. We know there are shortages in the United States. We know there's shortages of bus drivers in this area as well. And with that being said, I think sustainability is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
How much is the budget amount for substitutes for this current year?
I'm trying to go from memory. I'd really like to reference the budget document itself offhand for that line. But I think, I think we have 100 and... I want to say 125. But if you'd allow me, you know, that's, again, that's just, I'm recollecting from back in March when we were developing the budget. I'd be happy to get you the actual number, though.
How much, how much would it cost for the increase?
That's what's, for the substitutes, if we were to increase the rates, that's what's difficult to estimate. We just don't have any...
Low ball and a high ball.
Don't know, because it's really predicated on sub-usage. And we're in unique times. I do think that if we were to at least reserve, you know, 100,000, I think we could cover any increased sub-costs. Another factor that became difficult is if we were to fill, you know, a long-term, long-term substitute position, then, of course, that would affect the sub-costs, but it would, but it would also affect, instead, it would affect the personnel costs.
I understand. How many bus monitors are there?
Mr. Day.
Does every bus have a monitor?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
How many bus monitors?
Fifteen, John, is that what you?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and is that, are they included in this?
They are not, and they were not excluded, though. I want to make that clear. We were simply, we were focused on bus drivers, given the, for its previous discussion. The parapros came up just as a result of the obvious discrepancy in terms of the sub-rates for that position. So I want to make that very clear. We didn't exclude any employee group or didn't intentionally exclude. We simply included those the board discussed, and the one that we discovered would be problematic with regard to the sub-rates.
So the bus monitor is not identified as a parapro? Is that correct?
What's the, what's the monitors' salary? 1054.
We need to fix that. I apologize to all the bus monitors out there. I know that they are out there. I'm sorry that we forgot about you, but you do have a very important job, like it was explained up here. And I honestly had no idea that the salary was that, that low.
So I would, I would make a motion.
Let's ask.
Aye, cost of drivers is 18, pairs is 16, with a step increase for all employees starting in March for a total cost of 680,782, along with option number C for the 33% increase to all substitutes at the current rate from 75 to 100 in the beginning, and then all the way up in that column. And also raise the bus monitors' pay to be in step with the bus drivers' increase.
Mr. Collins, could we simplify that motion and walk through it item by item? I didn't follow, couldn't catch some of that.
I make a motion to pay for the cost of drivers at $18 an hour, starting, pairs at 16, with a step increase for all employees starting in March. And...
Can we start with that?
The first part.
Let's do that first motion.
No, I have one motion.
So...
Can I finish? Do you need me to repeat the motion?
It's...
I'd like to hear the second part of his motion, because I'm a little confused. If we're going to separate it out, I don't know that I want to vote on the first motion without understanding the second motion. Because are you saying C on this list?
I'm saying aye on the list. And I'm saying C on the substitute pay rate. First, second, third column. It goes 100, 100, 120, 186, 206, 226, and 100. And then...
Okay, you're calling A.
Raise the bus monitors' pay to be in step with the, the bus drivers' pay. So what their increase will be, will be the bus monitors' increase.
I understand now. I just wanted to make sure you weren't talking about C on the second.
No, it's on the aye.
Making confusion, okay.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I feel like we could separate it out and have the conversation, and it would be easier to process. Nevertheless, so... So a motion to accept option aye through option aye for bus driver and employee salary adjustments. And you are saying the third column, the board request 33% increase to all current rates?
So cost of driver at 18, pairs at 16, with a step increase for all?
No, no, I know, I know, Mr. Collins. So the second part of your motion was...
Third column.
The third column, the board, in the substitute pay rates, it was the board request 33% increase to all current rates?
Yes.
Hold on.
This may make a suggestion that we only vote on one at each time so we can discuss the bus rates, and then we can discuss the substitute rate separately. So when we're trying to talk about both of them, we're not getting...
That is precisely what I was advocating for.
Thank you.
All right.
There's still a motion on the table.
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
All right.
So I think, yeah, I think the discussion item is, so, Mr. Collins, you had mentioned that the bus monitors' pay would increase based on the percentage, the same percentage that the bus drivers' rate was increased. So if we went from 15 and change to 18 and change, whatever that percentage is, it would go for the, to the 10%? Or the $10, I'm sorry.
From the 1054 to the same percentage rate that the bus drivers?
So the 33% increase.
I don't believe it's a 30% increase for the bus drivers. What was the percentage of increase for the bus, bus drivers' pay? Do we know that?
I'd have to calculate the 15.
What is the amount? I got to calculate right here.
The starting salary would be $18 an hour, but then in March, you'd get a step increase, which would raise that starting...
What's the current bus rate, starting salary per hour?
So for the purposes of the motion, Mr. Collins, what is your, your bus monitor proposal? From 10, from the $10.58?
1054. Same percentage increases the bus drivers.
Percentage increases the drivers, okay.
It's only a 13% increase.
Okay. So I, okay. So I have a question, a couple of questions, Dr. Benson. All right, so Dr. Benson, in your chart about the, the salary, just my cost with your different options, so you've broken out the costs from November to February and from January to February. And then your options, the proposed options at the bottom are just for the drivers, the pairs, and a step increase for all employees. Is that starting in November or starting in January?
You're referencing, like, option aye?
Yes.
Would begin in March with the March paycheck.
Oh, okay, so there would not be an increase now for drivers or pairs? It would wait until March?
It would all start in March. However, you know, we would be developing it, but the, the increase to the scale would be added. You'd have the increase, but then you'd also have a step increase. So it would be more than 18 in terms of the net earnings. You know, it's going to be...
Okay.
So my understanding is that the $18 an hour and the $16 would be immediate, and then...
That's not what it says then, right? This is a kind of confusing, I mean...
With a step increase for all employees starting March. That's what it says.
Right, so that's my thought. We should discuss this and break up the motion. So back to the, so, Dr. Benson, so your other options, like cost from November to February for increasing bus driver salaries and para scales? So those were presuming we, so is this kind of like a, we could have also picked, like, all of card items here?
You're correct, that if you chose to, the option aye in terms of the, the step increase for all employees and the raise at that time for the drivers, if you chose to do the drivers and the pairs earlier, then you would go up to, if you wanted to begin in November, you'd have to add the amounts for letter C.
Yep.
And letter...
F, no. So we'd add I, F, and A.
I think it's E.
It'd be like A, E, and I to start now, and then give a step increase for all employees in March. So that would total, like, that would be well above the 680.
Yes, I mean, unfortunately, that's just, that's cost prohibitive to you.
Right.
With the amount available.
Yeah, I want to make sure everyone understood that that was what this was, because I did, I also was thinking that the increase was sooner than March. Okay, I understand that.
If I can help, though, letter aye, in other words, you would have no one making $18 as a driver or $16. Everyone then in March would move a step. So even those on step one currently would move to step two. That makes sense? So there would be nobody earning the base amount from March to the end of the year. Everybody would be step two or higher, because you're moving all employees a step within the year.
So there would be, like, on paper, the, the hourly rates would be increased at 18 and 16, and then everyone would get a step increase. So the rates would actually be higher than the 18 and the 16.
Correct. You're adjusting to their scales.
Yes.
These are not the actual adjustments to, you know, the, the change in the scale will, of course, impact then folks', so compensation.
Understood.
So I, I don't understand. If we pick A and E, which gives them an increase from November to February, what happens in March? What is their salary?
Then they would move the step.
They would move a step.
Correct.
What is, what is the cost for this? Sorry, Mr. Collins.
I'm sorry. So I don't, I don't understand the math then, because what you're saying is, in order for them to maintain sustainability, we have to look at this I, which is a 68782, because if we were to say we wanted to go A and E, I is an automatic, I is going to happen no matter what, isn't it? Am I misunderstanding that?
No, you would need to add the cost for A and E to the cost for I.
So A and E is not sustainable without I?
Well, if you were to, if you were to combine all three of those, as far as a cost, just add those three costs together, then you would exceed the amount available in terms of fund balance. That's correct.
So it would be closer to $1 million?
And what is the March, why is March the magical month?
That was just where we, we tried to calculate it in terms of affordability, but make the step as soon as we could. So while February's cost was a little too much, March's was kind of in the sweet spot where we could do the step for everybody and address, you know, with an eye towards the substitute rates that you'll, you'll visit as well, to make sure that those are affordable as well. Again, it's, it's a unique, it's a good thing. It's just unique, and it's, it's something that a school board here, at least, to my knowledge, has not looked to engineer, that's all. And so it's, it's, we want to do as much as we can. We just have to do it within, I think, the checkbook available to you in this fiscal year, given there's, you have enough opportunity coming up to build a budget for FY23 that could revisit these rates further, that could revisit all employees' rates, all employee groups. And I anticipate that's what we'll want to do.
Because you can't bring them down.
All right, so...
You can't give somebody...
Hold on, Mr. Collins, Ms. Pansier.
Yeah, let me, so is there, all right, so we just heard that they are having to do more because of COVID. So is there any way that we could get them the A and the E under any of our COVID funds so that they can actually get that pay increase starting in November, and then we would start them on their step increase in March?
I'd have to check. I'd have to check the regulations regarding Esser funding and whether that would qualify as an expense. I do think, and I'll share, that, you know, with kind of the question mark as far as the sub-rates, and I understand what the board wants to do, I'm not sure, you know, column C scares me a little bit, quite frankly, in terms of cost, because it is hard to estimate. That's why we created that column D to make sure that we were paying the very same as the most, as the highest paying in our locality as a recommendation to you. But we could...
I said column A and, I'm sorry, excuse me, I said column A and column E, which is just getting them from November to February.
I understand.
I don't know where C comes from.
At column, at the fourth column on the substitute pay rates, because the two are...
Oh, that column, okay.
Yeah, the two are certainly hinged together in terms of total cost and, and looking at, you know, the current year's checkbook and what's doable as a strategy. And again, I've tried to think this thing through. We could, as a contingency, should costs that this board wants to incur and do in terms of compensation, should that run as close to a zero balance or even, even under zero, we would then need to revisit potential positions in our school division that for the year could have been or changed the funding to Esser to make sure that we, of course, don't end the year in a deficit. So, you know, I'm just trying to share openly and be as transparent about my thinking, you know, because I'm, I'm trying to manage this budget to accommodate as best we can and certainly support what the board is aiming to do, but also kind of frame for you the reality of funds that are available, given they are finite, you know, within, as far as our operating budget. What we would do then, if, if those funds were exhausted because of actions we took mid-year, what we would, might, might have to do as a backup in terms of looking at ways for Esser to be utilized for qualifying experience expenses. And I just don't know if that one in particular would be a qualifying expense, but we could search for others that may very well be.
Dr. Benson, from a sustainability standpoint, so I appreciate that you gave, put in here the, the estimated fund balance of the 850K. Do you, do you have any idea how that compares, generally speaking, to fund balances of previous years? Like, is that on par with what we typically expect? Meaning it would have, be more inclined to be sustainable moving forward? Or is that like an anomaly, it's way higher than it usually is?
It's slightly higher, in my experience. We usually look around maybe 600, 500 to 600. So it is slightly higher, which is not surprising, given that we've, you know, it's been more difficult, certainly this year, to fill positions. And consequently, then, we're experiencing a little bit more of projected fund balance for the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. And the, and so the, the substitute pay rate table, so I, the, I guess I would understand that we have a motion about the, the third column, which is the 33% increase to all current rates. I'm in favor of the recommended one that actually, of, say, the seven positions that we're looking at, it actually increases, well, it increases all of them, but it actually is higher, pays higher hourly rates for some of the positions than the 33% increase did in column C. So I'm in favor of the recommendations.
Did we just go to the substitute pay?
What was that?
Did you just go to the substitute pay? Did you just go to the substitute pay?
I did.
Okay.
All right. So do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to close this gap.
I agree.
So first, let's, can we just agree that we're going to separate the motion? And I, I'd like to amend the motion.
No, I don't want to.
First the motion, just a minute, just.
Second, you vote on it.
Yeah.
You follow it and you make your own motion.
Mr. Collins. We can propose to amend the motion.
So it's, it's getting really confusing because we're talking about two different pay scales here and, you know, we just need to separate them out. So I'd like to do is just amend the motion so that we separate out the bus driver and employee salary adjustment cost, and then we will make another motion to accept the substitute pay rate.
You have to, you have to vote on the main motion.
Okay. So let's take a vote. If you want, you know, I don't know why we can't amend it, but.
We can amend it.
You can vote on his.
Let's vote on it.
Okay. We'll vote on the original motion, which was to approve option I for the bus driver and employee salary adjustments, the third column of the substitute pay scale, the, the substitute pay rates, and to raise the bus monitor hourly rate from $10.54 by the same percentage as the increase for the bus driver scale.
Which I just want everybody to realize it's a dollar and 13 cents. So they'll get $11.13.
Right. Understand. All right. All in favor of this motion as stated?
Yay.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. I, I don't think we're done discussing.
We're not, yeah, I agree with Miss Pansier.
I still have more questions.
So we can make another motion.
The vote on the motion.
Is it yea or nay?
Is it yea or nay, Gail? Ms. Hawk?
Nay.
Nay. Chair votes nay, motion carries.
No.
Would anyone like?
No, motion does not.
Motion does not carry. I apologize. Would anyone like to make?
I would like to make a motion for the requested bus driver and employee salary adjustment cost only to accept I and also include a $3 increase for the bus monitors. So it would be the drivers at 18, the paras at 16, the bus monitors at 13 with step increase for all employees starting in March.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
So I just, I, I have a question. Okay. So I did the math just real quick. $3 an hour. I heard 15 bus monitors. I heard 180 days, seven and a half hours. I did the math. It's roughly $60,000. Is that correct? Is that the same? Is it close?
Well, you would need to know where those 15 monitors fall currently on this scale.
Right.
To do the, you know, they're not all making that same base amount.
That, that's correct. But we're increasing them by $3 typically. So if it goes from 10 to 13, and we went from 15 to 18, so the percentage rate is the same. So I'm thinking that just basic, I just want to make sure that we're not going from, you know, 600 and, put my glasses back on, 680,000, and we're adding another 500,000 by some crazy.
No, no, no.
You know, I just want to make sure that I did the math right. And I know it's not perfect, but at least I know that we're not talking in extremely amount of money that we're going to bar exceed our 850.
I think it's reasonable. I think it's.
It's reasonable.
It's reasonable within the confines of the existing fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
And, and let's clarify that, that those 18, 16, and 13 would then have a step increase in March.
Yes, that's under I.
But to be clear, none of this, none of that increase would start until March.
The increase won't start until March, but then it will be increased in March.
And Dr. Benson is going to see if we can possibly use any CARES funding, COVID funding, whatever we're calling it, to do something until then.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't, I, I'd need clarification there as far as doing something until then. The, what my comments about the use of Esser 3 or CARES money would be as a contingency should these salary increases cause our, our current year's budget to come closer to go to deficit.
Understand. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I assume that everyone knows that we are not allowed to have a deficit budget. That's not permissible.
Correct.
Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right.
If you want to do anything with substitute.
What was that?
Substitutes.
Yes. Would we like to make, or want to talk about them first? Please. Would we like to make a motion pertaining to the substitute pay rate table?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for the third option, 33% increase to all current rates.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, was there a second? I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
So I, I, yeah, I, I, I would like to make some minor changes, I guess. So, you know, the high school diploma and the associate's degree is the same. And then, you know, I'd kind of like to take, and this is just, you know, me just kind of trying to make things adjustable based on experience and still try to keep things in, in line. But, you know, if we could increase the associates to maybe the 105, I, I think the bachelor's grade 120 is sufficient. I think that, you know, the long-term sub would be more equivalent to the 158, and then possibly the long-term to 186, and then reduce the long-term licensed teacher to 211, and then the para substitute at 100. As far as sustainability, and then now that we just added, you know, the bus monitors, I just think if we made those couple of minor changes, that the, the increases in each level as we move up is a little bit more favorable.
So that was a discussion. Would, would we like to amend the motion or is there further discussion? I'm in favor, I personally am in favor of the recommended budget, but perhaps with some of the changes that Miss Pansier mentioned. So.
So can I repeat those numbers in column C and if everybody can write them down?
Yep, I'm going to.
See if everybody's in agreement. So it'd be, high school diploma equivalent would be 100, the associates would be 105.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So associates.
105.
Bachelors.
Masters and doctorate would be 120. The long-term sub would be.
Sorry, masters would be what?
120.
120. Long-term.
Long-term would be 158. And then the, the long-term four-year degree would be 186.
Hold on. Four-year, 186.
The long-term licensed teacher would be 211, and then the para substitute would be 100.
211, para, sub, what was that one? 1, 100.
100.
100.
And long-term license would be?
211.
211.
211.
So.
That makes sense.
Call the question.
Hold on. Well, I'm thinking. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. This, we are deliberating. It's unfortunately not a question and answer session. Para sub. All right. Is there any further question or comment? So would we like to propose amending to the amounts that Miss Pansier recommended or would we like to vote on the original motion?
Main motion's on the table.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question? So I, I know we don't have formal bylaws and Robert's rules and so forth and so on. And in the past, Mr. Collins, we've amended motions. So now you seem to be opposed to amending motions. So.
No, I'm not opposed to amend the motions if I agree on the amendment, but if the main motion is called and it's properly seconded and then it goes through discussion and then it must be voted on.
Okay. So, Mr. Collins, you are one of five board members. Miss Pansier, would you like to amend the motion?
I would like to amend the motion.
I object.
Without his permission, you would vote on his motion? Then if it failed, then you could propose a new motion.
We can.
Okay. So let's vote on it.
All right. All in favor?
Bail his motion.
Aye.
And then redo your motion.
Yeah. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Collins.
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion dies. Would we like to make another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item C of the substitute pay raise as follows. High school diploma equivalent 100, associate's degree 105, the bachelor's, master's, doctorate at 120, the long-term sub at 158, the long-term four-year degree at 186, the long-term licensed teacher at 211, and the para substitute at 100.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right.
Ms. Gonzalez, can we address the question that was presented during our deliberation?
Sorry, which question? Certainly.
From the audience.
Yes, we may.
Sir, so I just would like to go ahead and answer that. And based on what the motion was, yes, the step increase and the pay increase will not begin until March. We did have a discussion, however, to see if there's some other way that we could use some of other funding so that we can supplement something somehow until then.
All right. Moving on. Next, we have our policy manual updates, which were reviewed at our last meeting. We have a motion to approve the policy manual updates listed. Welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the policy manual update as, as presented.
Do we have a second? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Onto our information items. Do we have any committee reports this evening, Miss Pansier?
I do not.
Ms. Hawk?
No, ma'am.
Dr. Cutright?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Collins?
No.
I do not have any committee reports either. Now we have our human resources update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, ma'am. Chair members of the board, Mrs. Zierzki's coming up. She's prepared for you, an update in response, I think, to discussion you had at a previous meeting. So I appreciate her kind of pulling double duty, doing, helping with the homework for what you just discussed, and then also putting this together just in response to some of your questions. I also want to do kind of early thanks, Mrs. Zierzki and Mr. Shado, I assume, perhaps Lindsay, those that came to the Fall Festival and spent their Saturday helping us to attract potential employees by setting up a booth at the Fall Festival. So thank you, Mrs. Zierzki and your staff members for going above and beyond that day. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Is this?
Yes.
It is working. Thank you. Let me, I'd just like to start off by saying thank you all for the salary, the compensation increases that you just voted on. I think those will go a long way to help motivate our employees in the next few months, especially as we enter the recruiting season. I have provided a staffing update. It was in your packet for you. And if you look at the picture on the very first, ooh, Mr., can I go back just a sec? That picture on that very first page is of our booth at the Fall Festival this past Saturday. And I would like to thank Ms. Helena Fedak, Ms. Angie Harris, and Ms. Kristy Cowan, who is not in this picture, but I appreciate them coming out and helping with the recruitment booth on Saturday at the Fall Festival. And I'll talk a little bit about that.
I was there. I recruited for you.
Yes, you did, Mr. Collins. And we thank you for those volunteers that you recruited for us. Thank you. Thank you. You came over to our booth many times and recruited some candy for yourself, but thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Also brought over, how many people?
I think you bought about seven or eight volunteers over, and we appreciate, we appreciate that. We appreciate everything you all do for us. So again, the purpose of this presentation is to, to update you on what we have done. And we have been busy since the last update at our meeting on September the 20th. And now, Mr. Vance, if you wouldn't mind advancing the slides, I'm not going to read over all of these for you, but these are some of the positions we have filled since our last update on September 20th. I'm also pleased to say that today we have added two more to this list. We added another para professional at King George, well, hopefully you all will be approving those this evening, but we do have another para professional at King George Elementary that we will be adding. And we also have an additional para at Potomac Elementary School that we will be adding. Down on that bottom block, the division, under division, I'm, I'm going to talk about substitutes in just a minute, but I want to let you know, I want to fill you in on our contact tracers. We had over 55 applicants for the contact tracing position as of today. Our goal was to, to, to hire 10. We actually have worked with even some of our current employees who are going to volunteer to, they have expressed interest in helping with the contact tracing in the evenings and on Saturdays. So we have 18 contact tracers and 15 of them are ready to go. We're just waiting on some background checks for a few of them. And the training for that will begin next week. Ms. Fisher is ready to start that next week. So we are very lucky to have that up and running.
Can I interject real quick, just to make sure everybody's clear? The, these contact tracing positions, we, like all divisions in Virginia, have access now to what is called a Vista grant. And those are funds above and beyond that we can, that will be reimbursed to us for costs associated with some contact tracing and some other testing that we may soon be able to set up with a, an external vendor to help our families who may need either diagnostic testing or who may want to participate in pool testing as another layer to try to help our schools. So I just wanted to clarify, this is not an operating budget expense. This is a grant program. And we're, we're certainly happy that the, the grant is, is there. It's, it's available. It's not a competitive grant. It's available for all school divisions in Virginia. And we're happy to utilize it certainly to, to help us conduct school in a safe manner and to provide a service for our community and staff. But thanks for letting me interject.
No, that's perfectly, perfectly fine. Our next slide is just an update on substitutes. I have nine names for you all this evening on our personnel recommendations. We have a processing date scheduled for next Wednesday, October the 20th. We have eight more subs to be processed next Wednesday. I think we already have three that have signed up for the November 4th processing date. Our October substitute job posting that is on our website at this point, from October the 1st until today, that actually, the number when I submitted the packet was seven, that has gone up to eight as of today. And I, as I said earlier, the Fall Festival on Saturday, we actually were able to talk to about seven or eight people who may be possibly interested in subbing. We have worked this week to reach out to them and encourage them to fill out the application and get them in. We had seven to eight substitute, classroom teacher substitutes, but also two nurse substitutes that we were able to talk to on Saturday. The next slide, just real quickly, I just wanted to share a little bit with you about some, some of our recruiting data, our KGCS website. When we recruit, I'm, those of you who have known me for a while know that I like data. I'm always looking at, well, what, what's effective and what's, what's not working. Our website, when our application actually asks applicants, how did you find out about us? Where did you hear about us? And the statistics from our, our recruiting or our application site, we have 1,407 of our applicants say they found out about a job posting on our website. 704 of them responded that they found out about us at a job fair. 108 said they found out about us through an advertisement. And then there are, of the other category, we have 873, and other includes social media, employee referrals. And, and with that, I remember doing some data for you all a few years ago. And we looked specifically back in 2016, 17, at our 48 professional staff members we hired that year. And we specifically asked them at orientation that summer, where did you find out about King George County schools? And I still have my little chart from 2016, 17 that I dug out of my file. And at that time, out of those 48 professional hires, 13 of them, which was our highest number, were referred by current employees to apply with our school system. The next 12 came off of the KG website, and then 11 of them were from the Fredericksburg Regional Job Fair. I'm, I'm happy to say that the job fairs are starting back up Monday. So we will be out at job fairs and recruiting through some of our job fairs. Next slide, please. So what have we been doing? Like I said, we have been very busy. And I, there are so many people that I probably need to thank. I'd like to thank Ms. Higgins. I'd like to thank Ms. Higgins, who has been helping us. I know today, Mr. Gary Cliff was out putting up some of our signs, and I have brought for each of you tonight one of these lovely signs that I'd like for you to take to, you can decide where you'd like to place it, any place in this county. I have one for each of you for this evening.
Kind of school property?
I've already done all the school properties, so those are taken. But wherever, wherever you can find, and I was, I was excited to see some of them in front of the high school this evening. But we are hosting these in the community. We also took out a half-page ad in the, it's the King George Colonial Beach Dowran Local Guide that will be coming out. It's the, it's the Fall 2021 edition. That reaches 17,000 homes. So that, if it hasn't come out, I don't think it has come out yet, but I think that will be reaching 17,000 homes in those three areas in the next couple of weeks. Job fairs, like I said, we are starting the Job Fair Trail on Monday. Slippery Rock is a school that we always have a lot of luck with in Pennsylvania. We are going to Penn State, and then VASPA, which is in Harrisonburg, Virginia, the first week of November. In case you don't know, it's VASPA is the Virginia Association of School Personnel Administrators, and we have had much luck there in the past recruiting future candidates for teaching positions. As far as the community goes, as I stated, we were at the King George Fall Festival last weekend. It was a grand time. We had a great time and had a lot of fun talking to people. The other thing we've been doing, if any of you have been to football games, we have asked our athletic directors at both the middle school and the high school to pass out these cards, have them available for people when they come in to purchase tickets or at the concession stand, and they have obliged and helped us with that. So we are trying to reach out to them as well. Next slide, please. And Ms. Higgins is, Amanda, can I do my two and then, okay. Ms. Higgins is going to talk to you about some digital marketing that we have been researching. Job postings, again, the substitute posting is continuous. We will continue that throughout the year. Postings for 22, 23 school year, we typically post those in January, and it's a generic posting for elementary teachers, secondary teachers, elementary special education, secondary special education. We will bump that up to December this year. And ongoing, one of the things that we have not quite been able to get to yet in this past three weeks is we do need to find a contact at Dowran that can help us at MWR post, post down there that we are hiring, and if we can find someone with that, we will, we will talk with someone there. The, again, as Dr. Benson alluded to this evening, the salary discussion will have to be thought about as we go into this next budget process, and in any incentives also would need to be a part of the 22, 23 budget process. And I'm going to let, at this time, Amanda, if you would come speak about the digital marketing.
Thanks, Ms. Yuzerski. I'm not as tall as she is. And we did reach out to six different firms in the Fredericksburg area, digital marketing firms, and that's their specialty. From those six, we actually scheduled two discovery calls to meet with the professionals about the services they offer. And from that, we filtered down to one firm that actually gave us a proposal for what they could do for us in terms of digital marketing. So kind of how they broke it down was they would offer social media advertising for us on major platforms as well as website statistics using Google Analytics, and the fee for that is $3,000 per month and a six-month commitment to the firm. So that was some of the investigation process we did just in using digital marketing as an additional tool for recruiting measures. And I was also going to update that we also looked at trademarking for the different King George logos that we have. We've selected three images that we use most often in King George County Schools. I do have samples of them, but it's the blue and yellow KG that's on the we're hiring signs, that symbol, as well as a little square that says King George County Schools with that blue and gold KG above it, and then our interlocking yellow KG that we find on athletics. So those are the three logos that we've been working with, and the fee for those would be $30 per image to register them, and then it's an annual $30 fee for each logo as well. So we've been working on that as part of the marketing process as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Higgins, Ms. Yuzerski. Dr. Benson, anything else to add?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? So $3,000 a month for a minimum of a six-month commitment is, yeah, it seems high to me, but I don't know. You know, did you get pricing from other vendors as well? Is that a norm, or did you just choose this vendor because they were able to give us the services that we were wanting?
This vendor was the most easily accessible in terms of our investigation and meeting with people. So it is the only price point we have, but in doing a little bit more research, that is about on par with other agencies as well. So I would say that's average.
Okay, thank you.
We would have to, if we pursued it, we would have to, given the cumulative costs or the aggregate costs, we'd have to go through a bid process, we'd have to open it up.
Even though it's less than 50K? I thought 50K was the cutoff for that.
50K is what I'm authorized to approve. So that's my threshold as your superintendent. The, if it purchases, I think, over $5,000, we collect phone bids, or we have,
Okay.
we allow companies to bid on that business.
Any further questions or comments? Ms. Hawke?
No.
Dr. Cartwright?
I just want to personally thank you for all the work you've done, and just want to congratulate you on a job well done.
Mr. Collins? All right, I have no questions either, but thank you both for the information, and it's a lot of hard work you both put in, so it's very much appreciated. All right, next we have our Honeywell ionization system update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, Honeywell, excuse me. Today, Honeywell came out with their equipment and visited all of our schools, including the preschool. And I asked them to, to answer you all, a question that you all asked about, we need some assurance that the ionization systems are performing as promised, and they have provided me with the data from each school or each location. I asked them to sample two classroom-type spaces and to also sample an ancillary-type space, a gym or cafeteria, one of those larger spaces. And so in between our earlier meetings and getting over here to the middle school, I have that data from them today. I'll assemble it, and I'll send it to you tomorrow, and I will also have it posted for our public as a handout for this board meeting so they can access it. But I can tell you, I called Ms. Colburn. When I received this data, confirmed that all of the readings then are indicating that the systems are emitting the ions as designed. But again, I'll assemble this, the raw data information into a table for you with any information that is needed to understand what those metrics represent, post it for our public, and of course, and to you all. But the good news is, is that those systems, as installed, according to their testing today, are emitting the ions as designed.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Any questions for Dr. Benson?
I have a question. Dr. Benson, I drove by King George Elementary, and it appeared that they were working on the mechanical system there. Did we get new systems, or what were they doing?
That is actually a CIP item from a couple of years ago, but we are getting a new roof on King George Elementary School.
Okay, yeah, they just had all of the mechanical systems covered in plastic, so I wasn't sure if they were new mechanical systems, but, or if it was the roof, but it is the roof.
It is the roof, and that is a, the covering of those was relatively temporary, I guess, when you saw it, but that was to ensure that any materials they're using to affix the roof or the membrane, that type of thing, are not drawn in by the, the systems. But again, those are temporary measures while they're doing that, and that would be, of course, undone when they finish with that.
Thank you.
And Ms. Hawke? Any questions?
No.
Dr. Cartwright?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Collins?
So Honeywell, I thought was going to come here and explain to us their 99.9% efficiency of not anybody contracting COVID or killing the COVID virus in the schools. They didn't mind coming and asking for the 747,000. They can't come and explain to us?
No. I'm happy to invite Honeywell here. The feedback I got, or the directive I got from that board meeting, and again, I apologize, I wasn't here when it was requested, was that you were interested in the data, but you, you weren't interested in necessarily a presentation from Honeywell. You wanted that data provided by me, and if I misunderstood that, my apologies, but I'm happy to invite Honeywell to come to a future board meeting for you.
So, Mr. Collins, so they presented, yes, when they were, you know, offering the system to us, they presented the performance, you know, the performance as was expected by the system. I'm not sure specifically what information they're going to be able to provide you. Like, what specifically do you want, do you want them to tell, like?
So I think what we were expecting is that the information that Dr. Benson got today would be presented to us and explained to us in the board meeting, I think, is what the impression was. At least on my part, that was my impression, but I'm happy to receive the information, and if we have questions, then maybe we can ask for a representative from Honeywell to come.
And I know they'd be happy to come and explain the information they gathered for you. And again, my apology, if I misunderstood the directive, but that's the way I understood it, is you wanted that information, but you didn't necessarily want a presentation.
Mr. Collins, would you like for us to go ahead and seek to have a representative from Honeywell come and present that information? Or would you like to review it, and if we have questions, ask for them to come and explain it to us?
Whatever you prefer.
Well, Mr. Collins, you were the one that wanted them to come and explain things, so.
Yeah, I did, I asked for them to come last time, and they're not here. So I guess I'll ask for them to come again.
Okay, so sounds like, Dr. Benson, perhaps we could reach out to Honeywell, find a date, I guess, in the, they want, we have three more meetings after this, before the end of the year. Would that be acceptable? Potentially, at our next meeting, if at all possible, to explain more about the results that they got from testing our systems? Is that amenable to everyone?
Yes.
That'd be fine.
Okay. All right. All right, so now we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Benson, do you have anything else you'd like to share this evening?
I do. Want to remind our community, I want to thank many folks and staff members in this board, I know, have or will soon participate in focus groups, and we are looking at our next five-year strategic plan. There'll be an opportunity for all stakeholders to access a survey to provide input into that process, but we're excited about data being gathered, qualitative data being gathered right now through focus groups and through stakeholder surveys. And I appreciate everybody's participation in that process. It will only yield a much stronger strategic plan the more voices that can be included in that process. I also want to thank everybody who made the Fall Festival a fun time, enjoyed pulling our float, so to speak, first time, I think we've had a float, but enjoyed pulling that and celebrating with our community an annual tradition that I'm very glad is back after a year off. And I hope everybody enjoyed, I'm sure everybody enjoyed the candy tossed gently their way by our school board member. She did fabulous job. And just a personal note, I thank the school board from my wife. She received a very generous personal expression as far as the flowers, thanking her for her part in making our float a success, and she wanted to pass along her gratitude. It was a nice surprise today, and she appreciates that, appreciated that very much. Wanted to, to kind of build on something and thank Ms. Higgins. She's been working diligently to, to Kindle or rekindle, I guess, our volunteer program. I understand that she has more than 20 applicants already. We already have nine who have been vetted, cleared as far as background checks and trained, and are actually in our schools, which is fantastic to have that extra help, and we greatly appreciate those folks. And lastly, I'll be leaving Sunday for Charlottesville to join other superintendents in state meetings. It's at those meetings that we typically are afforded information as far as forecasts for budget, general financial forecasts of the state, and we also participate in professional development activities that help us to come back to our divisions and then lead the budget development process as we move into early next year. It's hard to believe, but we're here. So I will be there Sunday through Tuesday midday and then be returning Tuesday afternoon. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. So this time, we'll conclude with our board comments. Ms. Panzira?
Yeah, I'm kind of bummed that all the bus drivers are gone because, you know, I just wanted to let them know that, you know, I think they have a really hard job, and I know that the bus driver I had growing up through, was the same bus driver through kindergarten all through high school, and I can't remember her name, but I think she was the most impressionable person in my childhood education. And, you know, they have a hard job, they get picked on a lot, and, you know, I just think that they need to be appreciated a little bit more, so I wanted to be able to do that. But hopefully by having, giving them a raise, that, that will show a little bit of appreciation. Also, I just want to thank Ms. Yuzerski and Ms. Higgins for all your hard work. I know that it's been hard, we've tasked you guys with some pretty tough things here the last few months and beginning of school and getting all this done, but I think that's going to prove that it's going to pay off for everybody, so I appreciate that as well. Dr. Benson, you know, I'm glad to have you back. I know you've been going through a lot of things, just want to let you know, you're in my prayers and, you know, thanks for everything that you've done. And this past Saturday, participating in the parade, it was a lot of fun. I am, I only ate four pieces, I swear, and I think I hit at least that many kids in the head. But it was a lot of fun, and I am going to miss not doing that again, but glad that we had the opportunity to do that. So I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Panzira. Ms. Hawke?
I want to reiterate my thanks. I hope the bus drivers will tune back in and hear that we appreciated them being here tonight, but we appreciate them more than we can ever express. And I think we need to be continuously aware of all the support positions because each, each role in the system is so important. And I know, and we've said many times, that sometimes the person who has perhaps a small role to play in the larger division impacts more children in the long run than some of the more influential positions. I want to say thank you to Ms. Yuzerski, especially and her staff. Wow, I think what we've, what you have accomplished on our behalf has been amazing. And who would have thought that, that we'd be at a better position now? I know we have a long way to go, I do, but I think this is, this is great progress. And Ms. Higgins, wow, you are, you are just stepping in and stepping up, and this is exciting. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawke. Dr. Cartwright?
I have had the honor to visit three schools just recently, and I might add, even though we have challenges with the pandemic, we have some wonderful teachers and staff in this school division. I'd like to say that I've seen a positive school climate in all three schools, King George High School, King George Middle School, and King George Elementary School. All the schools are orderly and clean. The staff and teachers are engaged with students, and I just say, the job well done. I'm very proud to be part of this county and to be your school board member. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Mr. Collins?
Well, I'm not going to reiterate what everyone said, but I also give thanks. The $18,000 digital meeting, media campaign for six months is not an unreasonable amount of money, and I think you'll see that it will give you results that you'll really be surprised at. So I ask you all to consider that next time we're, we meet, if we get on it that often. if we can get that off, off the go. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. So I also won't repeat everything that's been said, but I'm very proud of this board for approving the pay increases that we did this evening and this stuff increases for employees. So I think, I think that's the very least we can do to say thank you to all the hardworking staff that we have. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming together and making that work. And thank you, Dr. Benson, for pulling all of that together for us. And I also thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to represent the school board in the Fall Festival Parade. I think next year we'll have to be more strategic with our candy distribution. And I definitely ate more than four pieces of candy. So there you have it. All right. At this time, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.23711, 8.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates.
Dr. Cartwright, read the, we revised one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the one on, on my agenda. Pursuant to the State Code Section 2.23711, Point A1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitute stipends, resignation and retirement of employees of the school board.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session.